We'll wait for the guy at the table down there.
I gotta chew first. He'll just swallow, and then he'll be good to go.
All right, where are we at?
Ten seconds.
What do you think, Harvey?
That beard gives no way now, right?
That's right, gotta make sure it's clean. All right. You want me to continue on there, Councilor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me change my screen here. On the bottom of page 12, I wanted to have just a quick conversation about golf course. And I also have in your supplementary piece, the next page over, is a golf course statement. Now, there's two very different looking statements. One of them is based on budget, what we're budgeting. And then over the page, and then we'll go there in a minute, is what we're considering will be the actual for the year. And they tell a little bit different story, in a good way, by the way. The big thing for the golf course that we're trying to figure out, and we pulled it out of the budget for now, is how we want to handle this darn hole sixteen. And, I mean, I can fund it in the budget without any impact on the bottom line if it's by debenture, if we're gonna borrow, but then we now have a payment that's gotta come out of the operations. And we already have a $65,000 payment coming out of the operations for the equipment. And to start to back those payments has me concerned, frankly. When we ran the numbers on it, it really starts to put us in a bit of a bind at the course. If you look at your supplementary documents, so this one, and the next one was golf course, and so, again, this is what we're budgeting, and the 2019 column is not how it was, it was what we budgeted in 2019. Let me be clear on that. But we had budgeted $144,000 loss in 2019. By the way, we did much better than that, we'll talk about that in a minute, but... And then in 2020, we're budgeting $129,000 loss, but that includes a $65,000 loan payment. So, the operational... There's a $129,000 operational loss is what is being budgeted with that payment. And the question is, how sustainable in the long term is that? And also, do we want to add another debenture on top of it? That's where I get concerned, but at the same time, we're talking about one of the eighteen holes of the golf course. That in order to have a golf course, you really need a functional eighteen holes. It's not like it's an arbitrary expense that, you know, we could take or leave, so I'm quite perplexed on this one. I'm not sure how to deal with it. There's this part of me that says, you know what, money's cheap right now, let's put the money into it and deal with it over the long term, but that's, that makes it tough for the long term. What's the appetite of the community to have a, you know, $200,000 loss or $180,000 loss here for a long time till all the debentures are paid up? I don't know.
Nine years ago, or seven years ago, when we ran for council, the desire of the community was to reduce the losses on that golf course. Some were saying, "Sell it", or at least make it so that it is not going to be an expense that represents a quarter of the deficit of the recreation, which it would be pretty well. Not there, but not far away from there. So that's something we have to remember. There is not really an appetite in this town to spend money solely on one item of recreation. And so I'm a little cautious there as to what's the appetite for us to have. I mean, I understand a golf course has to be a playable kind of playground, otherwise why have it? I totally understand that. But when you start to get a line of credit as expensive as that is, or as large as it is, it starts to concern me greatly, it really does. Because I'm not sure that the community would support that, that kind of move.
I guess the question is, then what is the solution?
Or what's the alternative?
And, but here is exactly where the conundrum is, right? And are there possibly ways to reduce the impact on a budget?
There are ways of increasing the revenue, but you can't do it.
Well, and would that increase the revenue up to now, when the, when the golf course was functional and did not have the problem? The revenue were not increasing. So is that a truism? I don't know.
Well, it is if we can bring it in, because the whole golf courses that sell alcohol are making $68,000 a year on it.
But that was...
That's the mute point, because the long cover's gonna happen unless things change. Get Councilor Shaw.
Last year, we made money at the golf course.
Yes, we did.
Where are we at, Joe?
So if you flip over in this supplementary document, we did a pro forma, why we called it a pro forma is the year's not over, but we were just trying to estimate as best we could what was still coming in for the year. So operationally, we had a, we project about a $35,000 deficit in the loan payment, so it makes it $100,000 on the year. $35,000 is far less than what we're budgeting operationally lose, so I was pleased with that. Right now, we're still actually in the black operationally. If you look at the next column, the year-to-date, we just anticipate some additional costs before the end of the year, and then the loan payment. So...
So we made money last year, but not this year? Is that the idea?
No, 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 we made...
So last year, we, we had, well, we had no capital.
We didn't have to take expense of buying...
I wonder whether that was a part of that problem as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Great spring, mediocre summer.
For me personally, I actually am not offended by that operational number.
No, I think...
You strip out the payment, when those things stabilize, that's not a, that's a big operation to run for a recreation facility and only have that kind of operational loss. So it doesn't offend me too bad, is what I'm saying. Can we improve on it? I hope so. But it's not, we budgeted a lot less, or budgeted a lot more, sorry. We anticipated going into the year with a lot higher operational loss.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to be clear, so, so 459...
Is the revenue.
Is the revenue.
Yeah, correct.
Minus the sixteen, $65,000 for the, so then that puts us at 99.
Correct.
But then, what's this 12?
So the year-to-date is what we've actually spent to date. The first is what we anticipate at December 31st will be at. Because right now, as we said here, we haven't made the $65,000 loan payment.
Also, we haven't made.
And we know we've got a couple, another, a little bit of payroll to tidy up, and we know we have some utilities through the end of the year. We know we have like a chemical booking, and, you know, a few things that are still gonna come through. And so that's why we called it a pro forma, because we were estimating the future on it.
So the 12 is...
Today.
So we actually, if we circle it up, we made $12,000, but it's still coming in.
Yeah, at this point right now, we're above ground, yeah. Yeah.
Do you know what hole sixteen looks like?
Yeah, that's the proposed change.
So...
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So, we have in here, obviously, pool loss, basically, basic loss.
I can do the quick math on that, yeah. Like I said, I'm not offended by the number, Councilor, for such a substantial wreck facility. Doesn't really bother me, actually.
Here's the issue that I have. Ever since we bought the golf course, we've handicapped it, no pun intended. We've handicapped it from the start by halfway finishing and doing what should be to attract people. I mean, I can bring people here, and I can show them the golf course, and they'll stand on the edge of the golf course and look at it, oh, this is magnificent, what a crappy clubhouse you've got. And that is the criticism we get every single time when people come to golf. They love the course, hate the clubhouse, and we get nothing from it. So, for some way, the group that's working on funding a, an event center, not just a clubhouse, but a town of persons, an event center, will help the bottom line of the golf course too.
That would be the hope, yeah. So really, I guess, when, you know, we pulled hole sixteen out, really, for now, it's actually in a long-term budget, it's still on paper, but...
Seventeen hole golf course.
Well, it still functions, I mean, you can still play the hole, it's just not, it's not how it was designed. And it's a really tough one, because everything rolls off the hill. But at the end of the day, it's still there.
You can play it.
People play it all year. But it's certainly not ideal. So we pulled it for now simply because we had no way to fund it.
Exactly right.
But if, if there's this, you know, if there is an appetite to debenture fund it, then you guys have that debate, and that's what we do, because it's on, we put it in on its budget. Well, on that I hope, I should say.
What are we talking for hole sixteen?
Uh, 268, I believe.
Yep.
However, we've never gotten that back from us for, if we provide some...
So a bit, yeah.
So we've got some of that back, they did break out, it's not as substantial as one would hope. It was fairly, maybe, shoot, what, it was forty grand, I think? Something like that. We did, like, hold in all the aggregate, did the trucking, brought in the fill, that kind of thing, I think it was about $40,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't as substantial as we were hoping, now that doesn't mean they have to be the terms contractor on the project either, right?
Yes.
Doesn't mean that at all.
Well, we need to find a philanthropist that loves that hole sixteen.
Lots of beloved, they just don't know how to pay for it.
But if the land was like to buy the whole thing...
Yes, Councilor Shaw.
But one of the things that the golf course committee brought up when Councilor Shaw and I were on it was, yes, there's the Les Ferber way of doing it, but is there not another way of doing it for cheaper? That, of course, his is, I would say his is the Cadillac. But is there not something that's more, I don't know, GMC-ish? I'm just saying.
Oh, I hear you.
There's got to be something, with everything, there's different levels of doing it. I mean, what I'm hearing, and I'm not an avid golfer, but what I'm hearing from the golfers is that that hole, because of the sloughing of the hill and all of those things, we need to be doing hill stability, or this or that, and I'm sure all of those things are very expensive, but do we have? Can we not meet them somewhere lower? Because $200,000 to me is sweet mother. Even, even $150 seems cool.
You gotta remember, you gotta complex drainage irrigation system, the whole thing.
Right.
And, yeah, it's, you know, car paths and trails, and I can see where it gets there. So is there a cheaper alternative? Well, sure, you know, let's find something cheaper.
They're still discussing with it the whole while. Yeah, not with that, yes.
Yeah, so...
Yeah. And I would just suggest that if we started with the golf course, we'll be actually set a time in one of our, maybe it's our next CCW meeting, where we can talk specifically about...
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll put it on your December... Okay, uh, I don't know, there wasn't much more here. Oh, electrical's coming up, but, yeah, actually, that's on page 13, the next is electrical. If you turn your supplementary package over, that's the next statement there. So electrical continues to be a profitable department for us. And we use that in our general revenues. They also reserve, they have healthy reserves in the department, so upcoming equipment can be funded by reserves, which is a good thing. We have, as Kevin talked about, we have some volatility sometimes in the transmission rates. And we're gonna talk about that at the end of the year, because you're gonna have to move some reserves to cover it. But we don't need to deal with that today. But by and large, it's profitable, and, and they're still funding their own capital, and then contributing to the greater tax base, so, so it's a good thing. One thing we changed in this, which didn't make a huge effect overall, is, is you might recall in the last iteration of the budget, there was a $300,000 bucket truck in there, which they were gonna have close to enough reserves by that point to pay for it, but Bart brought somebody in, Barton Hunter brought in a, somebody who works on these, and they found that there is, I know nothing about these trucks, by the way. But from what I'm told is if you replace the lower boom in this truck, so it's a major component, but everything else on it is very sound, and we should get a number of years out of it by replacing that. And that's an $85,000 touch, so as opposed to the 300. So it doesn't automatically free up cash because it was reserve funded, but what it does is if we had a challenge, or a wreck, or we needed to find money somewhere,
It would happen.
It's in reserves, because we didn't spend it on a $300,000 truck. And it's at your discretion to move it. So and I, and Leonard actually feels it's a very reasonable approach to the truck, he seems very satisfied with it as well, so...
It's like the truck itself, it was brand new, it's just the...
We bought it used, we bought it somewhat used, but it didn't have much mileage, but it's still in, apparently, if this lower boom thing gets changed, then it's...
Still in great shape.
Supposed to be pretty good. Yeah, and that's what it comes down to, it has to be grounded if they get electricity up in the bucket, like, that's the big thing of those, right? Everything has to be, that it'll flow down to the ground and end with them. So, so that's all, I didn't really have much else to mention, and electrical. So the last thing I wanted to talk about on operationally, on page 14 of the large document again, 294762, this is our transfers to reserves. I hate to tell you, we didn't talk about $382,000 worth of stuff tonight at this point. But that budget with that deficit is still putting $125,000 in major utility capital. You have some discretion there. To amend that all you want, you have discretion, obviously, over the whole thing, but that's an easy one to, to manipulate, to try and find balance. So, under the transfers to reserves, that is still transferring some significant dollars, $234,000 into reserves out of taxation, or utility revenues, so... And that's a number that we can, we can play with if we get in a pinch. And we've done that before, Councilor, where you've gone in on a budget to say, "That's gonna be 95 instead of 125", and then we were fortunate to have a surplus at the end of the year to top it up. But I can't guarantee you those surpluses, I'm just saying that when we've done it in the past, we've been lucky to have them. And we've got back and exceeded where we were at the beginning of the budget. So, it's something to keep in mind, that even if we're a little bit not as happy about how much we put away, we may have an opportunity to regain it. So that's a number, just, we'll, we'll kind of keep there, we'll float it, and if we get within 50, 60, 70,000 dollars, that might be where I'm coming back to you and saying, "Look, if we manipulate that, then we're balanced", is where we'd be. And then, it's twenty after seven, so I will try and be fairly quick here. I wanted to talk to you on your capital sheet, so it's the legal-sized paper. And we'll just focus on 2020 for now, I know there's five years here, but tonight, we're just gonna talk 2020. Now, when it comes to capital and looking to find cash to balance the budget, the most obvious is anything that is tax-funded or self-funded. So if you look across the categories, we have things that are tax-funded, we have things that are self-funded. The reason self-funded works, it's essentially, it's revenue from the utility that we either use to pay capital, or we put in the general revenues. At a principle, I like to be able to self-fund in those utilities, but sometimes realities get the better of us. The other thing we can look at is we have a number of projects that are MSI-funded. If we don't do those projects, or if we have another funding source, we can fund tax-funded things with the MSI and free up cash. So federal gas tax fund is really the difficult one to manipulate. So to say that we shouldn't pay First to Second Street doesn't do me a whole bunch of good on the bottom line of the budget, because I can't use federal gas tax fund for really almost anything but roads. Roads and sewer and water, that's what it's for. And, and MSI has much more discretion. So that one's a little tougher, so I just wanted to ask you on a couple of pieces here. Right now, if we start at the top of this, the Ninsutapi Monument, we have been as 19.5 in cash, and that's simply just to get to the number we need. The question is, what's the tolerance of Council for the amount of cash in this, if we're putting up land in perpetual maintenance? I think it's perfectly acceptable if you say, "Look, we're in for land and maintenance, and the, the, we've been writing the grants, we're managing the grants, we're doing all the administrative side, but we expect the other parties to come up with cash."
That was kind of what she promised to start with.
That, that was a bit of the discussion. So we can approach it that way.
I was just gonna say, too, if, if that's the case, and, and the money's not forthcoming from, from somewhere else, then it just gets on hold, you put it off until the money is coming forward. Because I don't think that, if we're putting up the land, we're putting all the work into it, we shouldn't have to put up the cash too. It wasn't our idea in the first place, I'm very supportive of the idea. But, when you're, when you're brought a proposal, you follow through, you just don't drop it in the land, or drop it in the hands of those you presented to. That's my feeling about it.
The problem with that is that the driver's transferred.
I know. Then there has to be an alternative plan.
We're trying to keep it going, Councilor, like I wrote, and I wrote some grants for it recently, we haven't heard from you. Otherwise, I'd have a funding piece in here, I just have... We assume $65,000 in funding, but we don't have that in hand at all, we have zero dollars in hand.
Yeah.
So, this might be one of those where we could either keep it in the budget fully funded, and if we don't get all the funding, we don't do the project.
That's what we should probably do.
I, I would kind of agree with that.
Yeah. Is everyone fairly comfortable that we're gonna put another funding of $84,500?
Yeah.
And then, if we don't come up with the funding, it's gonna sit there at the end, we're gonna talk about it this time next year.
Yeah.
The other one I want to talk about, go down two lines, the Peace Officer vehicle, we're gonna talk about this in closed session a little more, because there's some details here, but the difficulty right now to try to make this happen is, that's a solely tax-funded vehicle. All of the tax cash. And that's a big chunk of change.
Yeah, it is.
So we'll talk about that in closed session a little more, but I just want to point that out here. Um, the other one, if you go halfway down, the campground expansion, we've had to add a couple dollars here, and this is a very tricky one. We've got 50,000 in, we've got 100,000 in MSI, which is our biggest user of MSI this year, which I'm struggling with a bit, because we don't have any surplus MSI. But also the other 50 is tax-funded, the problem is, we're invested in this now. We have utility underground. We've got stuff that's already been, all the, all the equipment or the materials are purchased in this year's allocation, 2019's allocation.
How many extra sites are we working at, sort of?
I think it's 15, Councilor, I believe.
How quick, let me see our return on that.
Well, I'd have to run that, it wasn't, well, our net profit after all the other expenses, 50 years from now, you know, it's nothing, right?
Okay.
But it is bringing that, there's all that, what's the word I want? All that other economic activity that comes with those 15 sites all summer full. There's that other piece.
Yeah, you don't have to keep turning people away.
Yeah. So we need to look at that a little bit, we've, Brandon's been really struggling, a couple of the costs that we projected going into this have just frankly been out of control, like the washroom. The prices coming back on that are frankly unreasonable. And so we're just not entertaining them. They would kill the project for a 500-square-foot washroom. And so, we're looking at potentially just building the shell to house the irrigation controls, the utility controls, the electrical controls, but the washroom may not be developed right now. They're all full, there is one further down, and these are all fully serviced sites, so it's not like anyone's in a...
I mean, everybody has a...
We have the room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that may be, we may have to modify what completion totally looks like on this, because again, some of those prices are just coming in way beyond our estimations. Um, so, I'm just giving you a heads up, that one is hitting our MSI and our tax fund hard. The other one I wanted to talk about, just one second here, is, oh, 272027, this, this debate continues on, we need the rotarians at the table, but the spray park. Because we've got $100,000 allocated in there. The question is, so here's the kicker for me on this, we have $100,000 coming out of reserves in cash, but we're also going to be doing all the in-kind on this project, all of it. And we've talked, my understanding is, we were in for 90,000 including all the in-kind.
And what was it, yeah?
And is that the position we still have? And then I can amend this accordingly, now, it's coming out of reserves, so it doesn't really help the bottom line immediately, but we may be able to fund other recreation pursuits through the reserves, and then free up cash.
Where are they at?
I, I don't know, and I gotta get Justin at the table.
Justin, or is Brian on the presses?
I think this is still Justin's baby.
Still his baby.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I did have a conversation with Justin.
Oh, good. Good.
You know, obviously, the Rotary Club's position is, even if we have to twist somebody's arm to only have the rest of the cash that they need, they're going to do it this year, it has to be done, because they lose their CFE.
That's right.
That's probably what they should be doing, can they get the CFE, Brandon?
Yeah, it's...
They have 125 or something?
But they were short $100,000.
So the, the question is, are you standing by to close the gap on this, or what's the threshold? Are we at 90 grand including in-kind, because we already looked, the utility extension alone was 28, something like that, 26 or 28?
So, here's a little bit, my position. Are they expecting $90,000 to include the in-kind?
So, I think they hope that's cash. Because they have a gap, they gotta close the gap here. And I've been clear with them that it isn't. But then things come up like, "Well, we need to do the addition on the washer, but how's it, who's paying for that?" Well, good question, who's paying for that? Well, we need to get utility there, who's paying for that? Oh, yeah, but does that come out of the 90 grand? So, those are all, we gotta move three power poles, move a camp kitchen. That's all gotta come out of somewhere. So all that stuff...
Is that trying to form a hatch with the camp kitchen?
There's still a big cement pad there. Yes, I hear what you're saying, but please don't let dogs drain it.
Gums.
So there's just all that ancillary cost associated with this project, it's bound to be on the cash. And I think they're really looking at us to fill that $100,000 gap in funding.
So we had said 90,000, you have projected 100,000. So I think 100,000 is generous.
They've still got it to Town Square, is that still what they're thinking?
Well, so that was a talk in cutting and pasting.
No, no, it's going to go in the lines.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll adjust that.
I mean, in a year where we have to cut and trim everywhere, and we're still not there, it's hard to deny them the privilege to complete their project. On the other hand, it's also hard for us to say everything goes, because the truth of the matter, it doesn't. But, will that be a good addition to the town? Yes?
Yeah.
Turn to the last page, I think you did, we were under water for a while. So that we're projecting for a surplus?
Yes, but it's also in the budget to cover the cash needs of the budget. Right, that's where that all is.
But it's already accounted for.
Yeah, it's sitting in, covering costs in the budget.
All of that?
Yeah. Everything left over after capital.
And all four of that.
Correct.
It's all accounted for, everything.
Yeah, it is, those revenues are in this document that is making up the bottom line, for sure. So I can meet, I can have Randy and I, we can meet with Justin, and I think what we need to do is find out exactly from a cash point of view, what's short. And if we have an idea, if they think they can get within 30, 40 grand on cash, then, then maybe we're in, if we can make it happen.
Okay, so, when we were at the ICF, we understood that there was some reserve...
That they had some set for them.
There. So, I suppose I also know that.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Go ahead, Councilor Shaw.
Exactly.
So, I'm not part of this conversation, so I have the question, I know they did go to the county, and so the county, so out of this $100,000 that they're asking us for, whatever money they're getting from the county doesn't change this $100,000? So if the county, if the county, let's say, gave them...
Thirty hundred thousand.
Yeah, we wouldn't minus it off of our 100.
Yeah, no?
No, no, no.
Just to make up for theirs, sure.
Yeah, because that grant was 100 grand short, and so... So.
But if it was a hundred grand short, it's a hundred from us.
We were already in. No, it was a hundred with our ninety in. They were still a hundred grand short.
That was already accounted for.
Yeah, they accounted for our ninety.
That CFE, they have to use it by when.
May first, I think. May fifteenth, somewhere in there.
Yes, right. Or it's put off.
I think he hasn't told you.
Maybe.
It's in July.
I'll try and meet with Justin soon and get an idea where they are from a cash point of view.
No.
Um, this thing I wanted to ask on, uh, on two seven two three oh seven, it's the floor mats at the ice rink. This one's a little quiet on this. We've written some grants, uh, to try and acquire fifty cent dollars for the floor mats. But do you as a group have a threshold that you expect, say, Minor Hockey and Skate Club to come forward to? Because we, we haven't considered their contribution to this, so we're funding most of it really out of reserves. Yeah, go ahead. I'm just trying to find it on the spot.
Three oh seven.
Two seven two three oh seven, it's about three quarters of the weekend.
Oh, this one? So my question to that, or kind of the answer to that, was when we talked to them as the rec board, they were totally on board with fundraising and doing whatever possible to, to put money towards that. So it is reasonable to assume that they are willing to step in with some funding on those floor mats, for sure.
Well, we'll touch base and see where they're at. And you'll have to decide what your threshold is.
Sixty thousand for floor mats.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to cover.
I know it's four, but.
They're like thick.
I know, I know.
They are not expensive, though.
I'm actually surprised it's only that much. Honestly, I am. I'm surprised we can outfit the rink in only that much. That surprised me a touch, but. Anthony's written a grant for fifty percent of it. We'll see what happens.
Because we didn't get the one.
You knew before, we didn't get them.
Okay, other than that, that's really all on twenty twenty capital I wanted some advice on. I mean, there's a number of things. For example, if you look at dugouts at Town Square, pickleball court, if you look at some of the MSI funded stuff, we could free up cash by funding other, like, tax-funded things with MSI. We just might have to get down to what's the priority of the MSI-funded items. Um, and see what makes it and what doesn't.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
If, if we didn't do the dugouts this year, how, how would that affect?
About eight thousand.
I'll be frank, we didn't expect to do dugouts on that diamond ever. Just because it's such a small old diamond. So it wasn't, we weren't ever gonna be doing it.
They haven't done any preliminary work on it yet, then?
No, they've done that.
Down here, yes.
They've, they've started on the red for.
Yes.
Um, but no, no, they haven't, because it's not funded yet.
Could that be something, and I'm asking councillor Brown this now, is this something that could be put off for another year?
Well, I mean, anything could be put off, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, is it gonna, it's gonna really upset the applecart if it didn't happen anyway.
I don't think anybody's gonna move out of Curdston.
Good.
You can ask Ben. He'll be our gauge for that. There is a bit of a safety concern there, because there's little kids using it, and it's hard to keep them pral.
Yeah.
If you go to dugout, at least keep them pral.
And the bigger picture is that, I mean, for us, putting those fences up was a game changer, so to speak. And putting the dugouts where they need to be also keeps the parents away from the kids and the coaches, which was a huge complaint of bullying and things going on. So is it important? Well, yes, that's why it's on the list. But like, everything on here.
Yes, yeah.
It's discretionary.
Yeah, if we don't have money, you don't have money, right?
Okay.
So we, we can address that one even as we narrow it down a bit.
I mean, it's the same story with the pickleball. Forty-five thousand dollars, we're trying to find ten thousand here or whatever. Uh, up to now, I know it's not ideal, but they have a place to, to play. And they're happy where they're playing. Is it ideal to have, uh, to have, uh, competitions or whatever? No, probably not. But. Yeah, I mean, forty-five thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, right?
You can ask if you have deep pockets.
Yep.
And if you have the cash, you wanna talk to your representative.
I just wanna point out to any of the green heads on here, we had Brandon go back and look at all the capital paving, water sewer, just to make sure, and most of those he was able to bring down a bit. Uh, one of those blocks, the short block, the rest of Seventh Avenue, isn't as long in meters as the other one. So we've been trying to even just tweak little stuff like that. Um, and get through that. Um, that's all I had.
That's all.
Yeah, an hour and a half.
Okay, any other questions?
So we'll bring it back to you again in November. So you're getting a go at this, a second meeting in November again.
All right.
And we'll tell you where we're at.
Okay, so any other questions on Budget Twenty Twenty? If not, we'll go to draft policy, F dash twenty dash seven, fees and charges. Councillor Brown, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. So.
I think it came as a recommendation from.
I got it. Yeah, so Parks and Rec Board looked at this, and there were just a few changes that we came up with. They're highlighted. Majority of them stayed the same because we felt like making, uh, the town of Curdston, um, pay more. It's not feasible, because the majority of us are, um, rates at work aren't going up, so we didn't wanna jump things too much. But some, and we tried to keep it in with McGrath, Raymond, and Sterling Pools. So if you'll just look at numbers, I mean, they're pretty much right in front of you.
Are the highlighted ones, are the showing increases in?
Yeah, yeah. There's last year's rate and, I mean, this year rate and next year.
Correct. I mean, they're not huge, like.
Any discussion, any comments on that?
If there's no issues, we'll just bring it prepared as a draft in council meeting next meeting.
I mean, it's, it's very reasonable, whatever you've done.
Okay, there's nothing else on that. We'll go to the Renumeration Policy. Is it possible to move this, since we are kind of tight for time right now, that we could table this?
I think it's important to have all the councils.
Yeah.
I can put it next week, no problem?
Yeah, absolutely, I agree.
Pass that one, then.
I don't think, would be worth discussing.
Next one, Bylaw sixteen forty-nine Distribution.
I thought Kevin was gonna get into a little bit more, in fact, I thought he was gonna have, uh, rate recommendations for tonight, but he doesn't. He mentioned he'll have that next week, so honestly, councillor, you can leave this one alone. We'll bring it to a future meeting.
Other business, Historical Society's looking for more money again. Just trying to find that.
Well, they're trying to have us pay all the utility. Now it's almost seventy-five hundred dollars. It's an awful lot of money, but there's, they were talking about a change in the assessment that the town did. Obviously, we know the town doesn't change the assessment. But it is the insurance that uses a different assessment value in order to assess the insurance fees on that building for their collection, et cetera, which never was quite properly protected.
Yes, go ahead.
That letter's confusing.
Yeah, agreed.
It almost looks like they're asking for this year's and next year's.
Did they not get paid already?
We've, did we get them, yeah, we've got them paid. It was recently, but they were paid.
So they got it now?
Yeah.
Because I believe at the last meeting, they hadn't been yet. Does that sound right?
So the seventy-five hundred dollar represents what exactly?
Fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Fifty-seven?
Yes.
That's basically their insurance.
I also the.
That's basically their insurance and utilities. That's what they're asking.
It said the insurance, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
It said the insurance cost alone was fifteen hundred dollars over our budgeted amount.
Because of the assessment.
So it says, as the town considers its budget for twenty twenty, we request that you consider this increase as part of your grant to the society. This year, our request for funding this year is five thousand seven hundred.
I believe that's for twenty twenty, I believe.
Well, that's what it says.
Yeah.
It says that, twenty twenty. So they're asking for this next year. They want us to give them fifteen hundred dollars more than we gave them last year.
That's correct.
Is my understanding. Is that right?
We gave them six thousand last year.
Forty-two hundred. You keep thinking it's seventy-five hundred.
We gave forty-two hundred last.
Okay. We gave them four thousand last year.
And they're asking for fifteen hundred more.
They are, they are trying to raise money. They're doing what they can. There's, it's limited how much they can actually bring in. They have a big copper coming up here pretty quick. And they've had speakers come in for a few dollars here and a few dollars there. So there, there's definitely been a change over the last ten years even that they're trying to make it. Also, they got hit, as all of us have gotten hit with the step grant, gone away. And they depended quite a bit on step grant, didn't they?
They pay all their labor. The town pays.
They never.
So not only we give them fifty-seven hundred, we pay all the seasonal labor.
For the three, for the three staff that they have?
It's all us.
Okay. I thought that was step grants.
Well, if we can, we sure take it.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't gotten a step grant for a couple of years.
We get one last year?
We didn't yet.
Oh, we get last year, I think.
But this year, twenty nineteen? Yeah, we got summer jobs, Canada's winter jobs.
But no step, yeah.
By two thousand twenties, there is no step grant. It's gone out of the budget.
They'll still have their three staff for the summer coming up.
Councillor Brown has the table here.
So out of this five thousand seven hundred that they're asking, essentially, this money solely goes to their insurance and utilities and nothing else? Is that correct?
Correct.
It's my understanding. Councillor.
Do you need a recommendation from us to go forward with council? I just wanna point this out.
I can just put it back on the agenda. It's fine.
For council?
Yeah, for councillors, you can, where you wanna go with it?
I mean, essentially.
It's our facility, so.
Essentially, so.
We're gonna do.
Is it ours?
They got it for a dollar. It is theirs.
But.
But.
Let's put it this way, the money, they'll have to shut it down. That's bottom line.
Not, not that it matters. I don't wanna say this. I, I think it's a great group, but in twenty sixteen, we gave them none. Twenty eighteen, we gave them thirty-seven hundred, or thirty, forty-two hundred. Twenty nineteen, fifty-seven hundred. This is creeping up.
It is.
Quite quickly. Because we've gone from zero in twenty sixteen with that grant.
Part of the problem is this old building. It's just.
Yeah, I get it. I totally get that, yeah.
It's always been the problem with it. It's in that building, which is beautiful, but that building is not easy to maintain.
So if in fact. So if in fact we gave them zero dollars and they were able to meet the needs of the building.
They had reserves.
Yeah, they had some grants that they could use for operational purposes.
And they're no longer applying for them?
Oh, they're applying, but they can't get.
Yeah, it's not.
They don't have the same categorization as they used to have to get those grants. You have to be at a certain level to apply for the grants. And they can't always get grants.
Yeah, but it is creeping up on us. It's not a big dollar at the end of the day, but it is creeping up on us from a percentage point of view.
We could have my income sometime, maybe in two years, if you wanted to have a discussion again.
Well, I'm good if it's, sorry, if, if it's utilities and taxes, I mean, those are things that's bills that have to be paid, right?
Well, it's utility tax plus manpower.
I've actually tied onto our wifi just.
It's not one manpower.
Not this, but we pay it still.
We pay their seasonal staffs too.
Right, exactly.
So I'll bring it back, and you can make a resolution to that next time.
Okay, next, strategic priorities review and update. Are we on for that, or should we pass this on to another week as well, since it's quarter date right now?
Probably got a few minutes. Councillor Selk has an item I know for sure he wants to discuss. We don't have to go through every item if there's nothing we want to discuss, for sure. Uh, I got this here, councillor. I can hand it out.
Is that Deb? Deb in Torres. I guess you have one.
Oh, yeah.
In the essence, it's mine. I would suggest that you read this.
Oh, okay.
And I thought, um, Sheldon came to talk to our committee last night. He made a compelling argument about why you wanna look at this as a favorable project to get. Uh, the, yeah, Sheldon Daichi. So he's also suggested that there's a two-pronged element to this. One is the economic development part. The other part is creating a partnership with, uh, friends from what reserve, particularly from the community of Moses Lake. And, uh, what he was suggesting too is that, uh, Mayor, I'm sure you know Arnold Mountmore's. His recommendation was that we should sit down with Arnold and talk about concerns that are, and developing both communities.
But the president is not Arnold at this point, right?
No.
Right now, the president is Melvin, uh, Collins Last. Roland.
He recognized that. I think I just said that Arnold has a position as an elder.
I'm sorry?
Said that Arnold has the position of tribal elder, and therefore, hi- his voice carries more sway with Chief and Council, but I don't know. All I can tell you is read his proposal, and let's have a conversation about it in the future. And I can elaborate more on it, but not next, because I'll be.
I'll put this proposal back in CCW for December.
Okay.
Is this very similar to what they proposed several years ago, him and Phyllis?
That's, that's what I was wondering. I'm thinking it's the same proposal.
Thursday. Angel and I did. But Phyllis is not involved with it now? No, she's too busy with work.
They have too much money on her water stuff, yeah. I know Phyllis quite well, so.
Yep. So I'll bring that back for December for you.
Yes, I presented when you were on council, when we were on council.
Okay, is there anything else in safety?
If you have Angel touch base with Sheldon, I just know him that it's gonna have to be brought forward to our next council. That the proposal was presented, but no one had a chance to read it.
Okay. You bet.
Anything under safety and security we need to be talking about? Recreation, solar, that's moving ahead, I assume.
Yep. It's how the weather participates in it so long here.
We'll talk about number five later.
I'll have a look at number five.
Intermediative.
The government operation.
It's in, in.
Okay, C, Business arising from delegations. Anything from Mr. Kevin Phillips?
I don't think so.
Only understand that, but happily saying.
Welcome to the conversations with Kevin.
Correspondence is there, Old Man River watershed, thank you letter, AMA budget analysis.
I think many of you have seen that already.
Yeah, we sat in on that.
They've done a very good job, really. It's quite good.
Okay, Royal Canadian Mounted Police, anything on that?
Except that there is a seminar coming up on, uh, Thursday. And.
Webinar. Okay.
A seminar, yeah, webinar.
That's this Thursday?
Yep.
Yes. I don't know at what time, though. Do you know the time? Is that nine o'clock?
Yeah, just the one letter was the meeting the mayor and I had it. Any, any sources to follow?
Okay. We anticipate a little more follow-up on that. Okay, Service Alberta, Honorable Nate Lovish.
So such a request for us to kinda do a little bit of, I want some feedback on a certain amount of things.
They, actually, I have to give, uh,
On the broadband?
Minister Lovish credit that he's really trying to move something forward with broadband. So he's looking for feedback. I mean, Southgrew, I think, sent you a email, Jeff, that said if you need, if you want, Southgrew can comment on all the committees in the Southgrew region and what's happening.
I'm just, well, that's what I was wondering. Uh, I think, do we want still to have a separate letter? Or do we let Southgrew include us as part of the studies that was done in the southern part of Alberta?
I'm gonna talk to Peter and just see what the plan is for submission to the minister, and if he encourages a separate one or draft it, bring it to the council.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, besides, I think our comments and what we're doing, we're still not clear on yet, are we?
Not really, no. Still work in progress.
It's still fuzzy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I might make a comment. Southwest has been talking about this too, and they're in the same quadrant right now as to where it's going. So they're kind of taking the lead from, from Southgrew.
All right.
And the last one, MLA, Jeremy Nixon talking about smoke reduction, tobacco reduction.
I'm not sure we go with this one.
I mean, I mean, neither really, except I understand exactly the need that there is to really protect the youth as much as we can.
I do believe the last budget.
Products are extremely harmful.
But I do believe the last budget increased the taxes on it again, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, exactly.
As far as your response to this, my one thought, the simplest might be, is there's a link to a survey?
And do, do the input, yeah.
Agreed.
I had, so I had a similar thing last year with Alberta Health. And I had done that survey, and I asked, same. And I had done that survey, and I asked same questions about those different products.
But they want, what I gathered, sorry, they're, they're looking for input from everyone, right?
Yeah, it's, it's why.
So we can throw it out on our.
Yeah, why don't we put it on a website?
So, or Facebook or whatever, saying, hey, if you have an interest in this, please.
Dapings, when you start to raise, it's up ahead, too. It's gonna be a big one down the road.
I'm sorry?
Dapings, yeah.
I mean, that is really a nasty product.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Close session.
Close session, all in favor? Thank you to the media.
We won't have any business after, so you don't need to wait.
Okay.
Okay.